Welcome, Commissioners. We'll start with a prayer followed by the pledge.
Father God, we turn our hearts to you this morning. We're thankful for all the blessings you've showered upon us and we're mindful of those that protect and defend our country. We pray for them and keep them safe. We're mindful of county business before us and mainly as for your wisdom that we might make decisions that would be proper in your sight and your honest grace to lead a life that would be pleasing to you. Blessed are all in the name of Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Our meeting's for May 2nd. We have the minutes that were sent via email. Any questions or...
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Payroll number nine for calendar year 2016 totals $214,315.66. We had 240 claims totaling $573,255.59.
Motion to approve payroll and claims?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Monty, you are our first.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Bring over the chair. We have 81 inmates, four DOC, and if I wanted to start reporting the F-6 DOCs with the criminal law change, the F-6s actually stay at jail. And I didn't want to report and tell us, sure, but DOC is going to pay us for housing them, and we have 10 in jail now. The other thing we have is, it's kind of hard to believe, but our SRO contract is due for renewal with Northern Wells Community Schools. So we brought you a packet with the agreement between Northern Wells and the Sheriff's Department. Also, information on the advantages of the SRO and on the back page and also what Deputy Bradley's done this year as far as calls and that. I'll let Chief Deputy Holliday kind of fill you in on the agreement, how we changed it a little bit from two years ago after we got better information on how things were.
Good morning.
Morning.
Also with us, we have Dr. Scott Mills, Superintendent of Northern Wells, with us, and Chad Bradley is our School Resource Officer. We've kind of been, like Monty said, we've been in the works here for closing in on two years with our School Resource Officer program. We were approached a couple of years ago, just a brief history on this with Northern Wells about them receiving some grant money to get this implemented and started. Through this, we were able to fill that position, and here we are two years later. We have some accurate numbers now as far as figures. The contract itself is in your packet. This contract was, is very, almost very similar to the contract that was drawn up two years ago. It does have an option to renegotiate after one year of its implementation. Through the first contract, we chose to keep that the same at that time, but now that it's coming to an end, we went through and kind of refigured our calculations and numbers now that we have some experience behind us. Just for one example, we had it based on 180 school days. There was some involvement for our School Resource Officer that requires him to be there once during the summer and then to be there the day before actually school starts. So we changed some figures. We updated the salary, insurance, health cost, all those things in there. There is a slight increase from the previous contract and the portions there. So in all in all, we didn't change any of the body of the contract except for the years and the amount figures that was in there that the school has agreed to pay for their portion of the School Resource Officer to reimburse the county. So this contract was sent to Roy, and he reviewed it and looked at that and sent it back to us. We made any appropriate changes that we felt needed to be made. So all in all, it's been a great program, not only for the school, it's been a great program for the Sheriff's Department. It definitely keeps us, keeps our guys out on the road, knowing that we have an officer in the school that is there. And I think the teachers, Scott can probably touch on this, it's, you know, the ability for it to be received in the school, not only by students and parents and teachers. Over the last two years, that's kind of, that image has changed. They really enjoy Chad being in the school. We're not there to knock heads and take people to jail. We're there to mentor kids, be there. Chad's spent time in classes, teaching, doing other things that typically you wouldn't think a School Resource Officer would do. He's been a great liaison for our department and whatnot, so. But through this partnership with the schools, we're before you today to just kind of present our contract to you. We'd like to sign another two-year contract with the school, and their commitment has been there since the beginning and has continued to show, to be shown through that, through willing to do another two-year contract with us. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott if he's got any questions to add from the school's perspective on this program. We'll get out of your hair here in short order, so.
Well, I would just encourage your support in the contract. It has been two years. When we first started this, we made a long-term commitment to have a School Resource Officer. We were relying our initial investment on grant funds, which was paying almost the whole portion. Since that time, the grant funds have kind of fluctuated, but still, we are building budgets to provide a School Resource Officer under the terms of this agreement for many years to come. I just, I can't say enough about what Chad has done and Russ a year ago when he was our School Resource Officer. The hard thing about a School Resource Officer is the most valuable aspects of their job can't truly be measured because of the relationships that they build with kids, how they interact, counsel, work with parents, and really are preventing future problems, and it's just not an easy way to put down on paper. But he has lots of other activities that he can share with you that can be documented. We just ask your support because we would like to have a School Resource Officer at Northern Wells for many years to come.
And then Chad, if you'd just go ahead and maybe just add a few things as far as how you spend your day and the things that you've seen as a benefit.
Good morning. As Chief Deputy Holliday said, I've done some things that I didn't know I was going to be doing. They're not afraid to use me and implement me and into the school day. Yes, I've had several referrals to probation for criminal matters, but the job is more than that. It's about the building of relationships between law enforcement and students and then the staff. It's been very positive. The negatives are far outweighed by the positives. I mentor our kids on a weekly basis, try to be the positive role model that they need. They don't all have that, and some of them have been cast off to the side because of being earmarked a problem. It's just neat to be used from a law enforcement standpoint of not seeing them when I'm hauling Mom and Dad to jail or dealing with somebody on an OWI or a crash. So I really appreciate the opportunity to serve it normally.
And just lastly, we've, you know, we feel like we've accurately calculated our numbers as far as what the county's portion and the school's portion would be now that we have two years of history with those numbers. Like I said, we did readjust the calculations that make up all that cost and maybe appropriate adjustments. The school is more than willing to pay their fair share based on the calculations. Percentage of that did increase just a little bit, just because of the number of days and making sure that those numbers were calculated.
Do you have a copy of those numbers? Are they, they're not in there?
They're not in here. The total amount number is on there. I could, I can provide you with a copy of how we broke that out.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
To show that. It's the same calculations or the same calculation sheet that we used two years ago. It's just some of the numbers were plugged in guessing how much cost would be in these, in certain areas for the deputy, but I can definitely provide that for you.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, we ask for your support of this contract and continued work with Northern Wells School District.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move Blake up and Heather, you guys should take very long, so. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you all today?
Good morning.
Thank you.
I have two items to bring before you, Dave. First was the one state that we had, and Blake's going to walk around it. We had a little bit of electrical surge in our office area for the security cameras we use. It blew out nine of our 10 security cameras. Dave Deep was very good about talking to Stylist. They had just replaced cameras at the middle school, high school at Bluffton.
Bluffton, right.
And Stylist were able to sell us cameras for $35 a camera to replace and then to come in and replace the power source that Dave and I looked at it, they looked at it. It's just one of those freak malfunctions that you, we may never see again in all our time.
Never blew a fuse and still blew the cameras.
Yeah. I've never seen something like that in that area before, but hey, there's a first time for everything. The bill came out to be $1,115. I'm here today, 25 of that is going to be for a camera for the courthouse security system on the second floor that Dave's replacing there. They lumped it into this bill. He told me to make sure I pointed that out. I'm here today to ask guidance on how we handle this because I'm not sure. It's a facilities issue and that would fall under the Commissioners to talk to, and then if we need to go to the council for further finding, funding.
Of the 1,100 and change, what percentage is just strictly your office?
All but $25. So 25 off of the 1,115, so it'd be about 980 some dollars.
Almost 1,100.
Almost 1,100, yeah. Or I'm sorry, 1100, yeah, I was thinking 1,000. Sorry.
Right. Well, that was a great question because I ran that by Todd and I ran that by Beth before the meeting here, just trying to figure out where we are because our deductible's $2,500 in the county.
Yeah.
And so where does this fall in? Do you have any input, Beth?
Well, we don't have a line item for, say, for to cover deductible amounts, you know, within, you know, losses that we've had, you know, fall under that. The only time we've really had where we've used your insurance for deductibles or stuff is usually, you know, a car accident or something like that, you know.
Or a major surge in the courthouse.
Yeah. Well, I don't even know, we've had some water damage, you know, different times, but all of us always fell under the $2,500. So in every instance that has been in the past, it always has just been taken out of that individual department's budgets. So either they've asked for additional appropriation or they've, you know, found a way to pay for it out of their budget transfer or something to that aspect. We've not, we don't have a line item in the Commissioners' budget. We'd be the same way if we paid out of that, we'd have to ask for additional appropriation of the Commissioners' budget or a transfer to cover, you know, any losses, you know.
Do you have any miscellaneous items that you can fund it? Either that or can you apply for more project income funds to do?
Well, matter of fact, I have Friday or Thursday night late, I got the finalized contract for the grant that you guys approved back in December, early January. I did get the state to enhance the grant, $32,500. One of the items were computers. I've got a couple of towers I was trying to replace. I think I can probably, if I can talk to Stylist and push this out till...
Till that comes through and then they...
That comes July 1st and then pay them, I can absorb this. We've paid for the whole security system since day one out of grant funds and project income. So, you know, I can do that again. That's why I'm here to ask some guidance, and it just conveniently happened, the DOC sent me at about 9:00 at night the contract.
That's what I would do. I'd go back and say, can you push it back with them?
Yeah, that I will do.
Monty will be there. I'm sure they'll work with you.
Then the other item I have is I just need to have Beth, she's, they've now gone to a one signatory per county for the grant contract. I wanted to inform you that we did receive the final signature pages for the contract, have Beth sign it, and then we will send that back for it to go through the Department Administration, Attorney General's Office, and then back to DOC for them and their signatories signed up. So while I'm here, I'll have Beth sign that and then we can turn that around because since it was so late this year in getting contracts out, they're wanting to get it back before the state so that they can make that July 1 dispersment for the new funds and new line items.
I'd make a motion to allow Beth to sign that.
Second.
Three, zeros.
Are there any, well, should I say, are there any other questions the Commissioners have for me right now?
No, not right now.
All's been calm, as calm as it can be, I guess. We haven't had anything too outrageous other than camera electrical issues.
Well, that's the worst thing that happens. I think you're in good shape.
We're in good shape. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, once they sign everything, they'll send us a full sign back and then we'll get it.
All of the one off you gave me. I forgot we got one.
Now, give me a copy of the full sign, one by the state and everybody, so we have that official record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great day.
You, too.
Ed, you are next up.
Hey, Ed. All those just came in to me yesterday.
Okay.
Take a look, give me a phone when you can.
Oh, they're right here for you guys.
Great.
If you want to start with a bytumus bid, you can do that while I'm passing this stuff.
Have you gotten a lot of those?
Are all those?
All requests.
Do they count?
No, we will have to get our heads together and prioritize. What we're talking about is we've received numerous requests for road conversions, so we've got, looks like a stockpile to go through. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. So I, these are not included in this.
Are they in any particular order?
No.
So you just stick them there?
I just made copies of everything and gave them to everybody.
Oh.
So we each have them all?
Oh, okay.
You have them from the whole county.
Yeah.
I thought there were three times that many.
No, no, you have them from the whole county. I had new words to it, like, wow.
Are these all on the same road, Kevin?
Yes, they are. It should be everyone on that road.
These could be our bids for...
On 5 West.
You already have these from other people, so.
Oh, I do?
Oh, yeah. And just to let you know, you have duplicates in there. So they're not as bad as you think. Don't give me one of these.
Copy.
Yes. Okay. Oh, no, how many we got in here? Just three.
Those are empty. Them's three.
There's three total. Is this part of this?
That came with those envelopes.
Yes.
And he still has.
So this one's here. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that's a different signature.
Yeah.
Copy. And that one doesn't have a copy.
Ed, K-Tex claim, right?
Yes.
What two do you use the most? I mean, like AE90?
AE90 and IDAS.
90S, you said? Okay, I'll name off the first one here. I have the, it's from the Clint Group, K-Tex Specialty out of Ashley, Indiana. AE90's at 1.285. AE90S, 1.385.
This one.
Which is that?
And, yeah, right there. And then you want that one.
Per gallon?
Yeah, and then you want that one right there.
Okay, so the AE90 on this one from Asphalt Materials Incorporated, $1.3120 per gallon. The AE90S is $1.6120 per gallon.
This quote is from Marathon Petroleum, Indianapolis, Indiana. AE90, I have at $1.249 per gallon. I do not have an AE90S, but I have a SS-1H.
They can't do 90S, so they just do the 90, so.
Okay.
$1.249.
$1.249.
Okay.
Per gallon.
I make a motion to take these under advisement and offer to the Highway Superintendent for his recommendation.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We're actually about 20 cents cheaper than we were last year.
20?
All right.
Next thing I have is you, we usually do a 10-hour day in the summertime from 6:00 till 4:00. I'd like to do that again this summer if you guys approve that, starting June 6th through September 1st.
So move. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, is there any way that somebody might be able to at least answer phones or something on Fridays? Because there were some people last year that seemed like it was a long weekend if there were issues. Or are you on call on those days?
Oh, yeah, we are. We are. And we have a message on the answering machine. If they call in and it's after hours, they call the Sheriff's Department and then they notify us. Yes, yeah, we're on call. So, and I don't know, Nate might be there sometimes, too, so. We haven't worked that one out yet, but, so he might be there, so.
I just wanted to make sure we had coverage for the day that you weren't there.
Yes, yeah.
I understand, it gives you the advantage to work late, but then it kind of also leaves uncovered hours.
Right, right. But, yeah, we're always available. If something happens, a tree goes down or there's a hole in the road or something like that, yeah, they can, they can let us know.
All right.
I think that's a good idea.
Which is?
I mean, I know there's some other departments that actually do that. I think they'll, the guys that work...
The Secretary or somebody.
Four tins, and then somebody might be in the office, but we'll, but I make motion to approve as your request, but I think that's something for discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Desk control, we ended up with 144 residents. We're down, and then we're basically down because of the three miles up there in Union Township. I think we did 167 or something last year, so that's why we're down a little bit on that. We actually did start that today, so. Right-of-way forms, Roy gave me another one here, so they're coming. His last two or three are pretty slow. Have we heard any more about the one up on 400 West, the Johnson, Chris Johnson? I know you've had some...
Other than the email I got saying, you know, like, what's the compensation or whatever? And I said, you get your road paid.
Right, right, and you haven't heard anything back.
Is that what the one that had twin, two different? Is that the one?
This is the one on 400 West at 1200 North, and it's the one that was in the estate. He passed away. Roy can explain it to you.
The owner formed an LLC and deeded his property to the LLC and then apparently died because it's owned by the LLC, and the LLC was administratively dissolved because they didn't file the report, so.
Okay.
We checked and the clerk's office found that they had opened an estate for him in Allen County, not Wells County, so got in touch with the attorney listed on the CCS entry, and it was, it was his son, it was his father handled the estate. So finally, finally, we got ahold of the attorney that actually did it, and so he was saying, well, we could do this, you know, she's, she could be the sole member, and it's like, well, the LLC's been administratively dissolved, so I would think your client would probably want that documented as being owned by her. So I just redid the right-of-way form and sent it to him saying, you know, here, do this, but I haven't heard from him other than like, you know, what's the county paying? And I said, well, you get your road paid.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's where we are in that. Haven't heard from him since then, but I made it as easy as possible for him by changing the name to the supposedly the daughter in sole heir or sole devastee in his will, and so that's where we are on that.
If we get that one, I talked to one of the gentlemen on 400 West. I think his is coming after I explained stuff to him, stuff like that.
That's the fence guy?
No, no, this is on 400 West. And then there's still one other person that I have not heard anything from. So I'll try to make contact with them.
It's got two bridges on it.
Yes.
Are both bridges in good, good enough shape that we won't be working on them in the near future, that if we do this, that we don't tear something?
Yeah, I think, I think so. I mean, I mean, I've overwhelmed him with enough that I haven't even talked to him about that. Because what we're planning on doing, me and Toby, when we looked at them bridges, is we're actually going to dig out the approaches back probably 75 foot and go down and go ahead and put the base stone in so we can come right back up to them. But, yeah, they're not, they're in pretty good shape.
I was out there, I looked at them, but what do I know about bridges?
Well, like I say, so 400 West is coming, 950 North, the one I talked to you a couple of weeks ago about the fence. I have checked with Studys, I left a message with them on Friday. They do not have that right-of-way state yet. So as soon as they get it staked and stuff like that, then I'll get with, I suppose, Roy, and we'll see how we can send them a letter and stuff like that. 800 North, we got the last one on that. The only one we don't have is the Acres Incorporated.
And they've got two parcels.
And they have two parcels. So I don't know how do you want to proceed with that one?
I think with Roy's contact previously, once everything's in place, here's, do you think?
Well, one of the parcels is a little, little different. It's, it's in some sort of a trust that's, and the state's involved, so you're going to have to go through the state to do that. So it's probably down to, they might, they might sign one if they're the only holdout. The other one, probably no chance.
So just move forward.
So you just have to decide if you can do it without that part.
That one will be okay. It'll be a little tight by the woods, the wooded area, but the other area, I mean, we'll get some stumps to take out and we can move the ditch back and we'll be okay. I mean, we'll be okay.
I mean, it fits for the betterment. The director was nice, it's just, it's just the way that that preservation trust was set up, that it would be difficult to do it, plus you'd have to go through the state to get state clearances.
Okay. Okay, so hopefully then continue to move forward and we get, the last one's on 400 West, and it dries down again so I can start working on stuff and all that stuff, so. Okay, just to let you know, probably roadside mowers, I probably will start them sometime next week. That's usually a goal. I usually try to start them about the middle of May. Put them in three different sections of the county, and then we, each mower will do actually three townships and stuff like that when I go to them. Your files there are all the applications we received all over the county. You have copies of each one everywhere. We do have some duplicates, and you'll run into that, that I tried to get people not to do that, but, you know, evidently people don't talk on their roads.
So...
Outside, inside, instead of...
Yeah.
One application.
Yes, yes. You know, just like the ones that Kevin gave me here, I think we already had three or four on that section of road. And you turned me in, how many more, three or four more?
The whole road. One person spearheaded it.
Yeah, and probably had everybody sign. I tried to tell people, we only really need one application per mile.
That's what we needed.
Yeah, so. So that's for your review, figure out what you want to do as far as stuff this fall.
Get it done next year, right?
Talk about using wheel tax. Wheel tax is about $360,000 a year. It's about $90,000 a mile. That would get you four miles. So that's just something to think about if you want to do some more than that. I prefer you do them in two-mile increments. So if we're going to do four, let's do six or something like that. But, yeah, figure out what you want to do as far as this fall. Like I say, we got three we're going to do, be at this spring, and then another four would be seven for this year, so. But that's for your information. But that's for your information. Just the other stuff we're doing, we are patching roads. Sort of waiting to see what the price of oil is, and see what I'm gonna do. I've, I've been over most of the roads once, as far as what I'm gonna seal this year, but, like I say, I just wanted to see what the price was. Backhoe crew, been running that. Did get the two pipes put in on 100 North, so they have time to get settled before we think about doing that hot mix project, and I'm, like, still working on stuff like that, so. Usually, you talk about new road projects, we went down and reworked all the berms and the side ditches on 700 West. Just, just a general cleanup in the spring of the year. We had some stuff we needed to level off. Had some places we hauled a little bit more dirt back down there, just to whiten stuff out. Have a little bit more to do down there, and then we'll go down and do top features when it dries down again. Just, his doesn't look bad at all. Down there, it was, there was quite a bit we had to do and stuff, so.
Is the seeding taken hold and everything?
No, we just, we just reworked everything, so we didn't do.
You're gonna be seeding it here?
We usually don't seed it. We, we usually don't seed it. Usually, the grass will come right back up through what Roy worked. Usually comes back up. But we just, like, the north end of that last year, it got too wet for us to work, and we just sort of leveled it off to get through the winter, and, and, you know, there's places where they got off the road. We had some ruts to fill and stuff like that, so. That's all I have.
How many miles of striping we doing?
As a rule of thumb, I usually do about 70.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Had another Highway Superintendent ask me.
Yeah. It just depends from year to year, what roads I do, and, you know, what I pick up and stuff like that.
Right, that's what I told him.
And then, you know, railroad crossings. I'll tell you this, I'm hoping, we still have a grant from back in 2014, when we did railroad crossings, that sort of fell through their cracks, I think on their part and my part, because we'd done it in late in 14, and it was too late for them to do the inspection, because it cut into winter. So I figured they would do it in the spring and let me know. Well, she finally sent me an email in March, and said that grant was gonna run out, and I emailed her back, and I said, well, can I still get my money for it? So I just sent all that stuff back in, so we should be getting about $8,500 back on that grant yet, from 14. So, hopefully. Like I say, I didn't hear anything back from her when I sent it back in, but, yeah, I figured they would just go ahead and inspect them in 15, the spring, and they, they didn't. Evidently, I had to notify them again before they would inspect them, so they just, in the meantime, we, we redid half of them in last year anyway, so they really look good. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Ed.
Yep.
You got a question in the audience back there?
Just, hopefully it's not out of place, but the, the, these roads are coming out of the wheel tax? That's, that's how we're hardtopping the roads now? Out of wheel tax?
If that's what they want to do.
Right. And, and so, we're starting here, and the wheel tax we collect, we're starting to pay for the roads, and we've been collecting the wheel tax for a number of years. What happened to that money? What happened to the money that we've been collecting for years?
I think a lot of it's been spent on maintenance, and, of course, me being the newcomer, like, it's not too much of a newcomer.
County Council meeting back in.
No, no, sorry.
I can give you the information of.
Okay.
How our funding went down during that whole period, and how our asphalt prices went up. At that time, we were paying like a dollar eighty-two a gallon for oil. Right now, we're paying a dollar twenty-five, so it's came back down, so.
Yeah, I, I was just curious. My, and it's, it's my fault, I didn't mean to interfere here, but.
That's a good question, Chuck.
Yes, that's, that's what it was, that's when the economy went bad, and our funding was going down, and that basically made up our shortfall to do the maintenance, and we just started rebuilding.
Well, and as a footnote to that, Chuck, the state of Indiana, we're not maxed out on our wheel tax, and council needs to take a hard look at it, because unless we start, just maximize that wheel tax, the state of Indiana's not gonna recognize us for any funding in terms of, to get maximum funds. And it, it's gonna be sent out through the whole state that way. And when it all comes, and it's all said and done, for the most part, unless everybody gets on board, you don't get to play.
Thanks.
You got 10 minutes, maybe less.
Six and a half.
Five.
Five.
All right.
We're gonna help you out quick.
All right, well, thank you all very much. This being my first meeting, I, I hate to admit, I only have four bullet, major bullet points, but a bunch of subitems, so I'm sure I'll be able to talk for 20 minutes next time. No, I did have a chance to talk with Lisa, the current ADA coordinator, and so a couple of questions came up during that, as far as trying to be proactive, get some plans put together. Was able to get a, a sample, which, I asked for a sample, and they gave me a full-size tile, so I apologize, it's not something that we can hand around. I've been through the plan somewhat. I'd like the chance to, to sit down with Roy and, and draft some amendments to the plan, essentially. There's a number of different items that are, are written such a way that, just specific to a person, I'd like it to be to the position. And then we can change the email address to essentially a custom ADA email for grievances and complaints. Talking with Lisa, there have been no actual grievances filed, so we're not getting a lot of input from the public as far as which projects to move forward with. I guess my, my initial reaction would be to recommend establishing a standard ADA detectable warning surface. That would allow Ed and I to order a stockpile, essentially, of those panels to be used on the 44, 46 ramps that we have within the county that we have jurisdiction over. We can pull those. We wouldn't need to buy one for every ramp initially, just, I think a pallet's eight. They run in the range of about $125 to $150. I'm not asking to buy them now, but I just ask that we maybe adopt this as a standard, that way, then we can pursue pricing at that point, and then at the next meeting, I could give you some prices. That would allow us to start to nip away at that $10,000 ADA project or work for last year, this year, and going forward. Also, in the plan, it was the Northeast Indiana Regional Coordinating Council that did the inventory. I'm probably gonna talk to them and see if they'd be willing to update our inventory. That'd be an assessment of our county-owned buildings, as well as these ramps and sidewalks. That way, I've got a better feel of what the conditions are today versus 2012. I can do the inventory, but if they're willing to do the inventory again, at least to keep some consistency, and then I can work on some of the other items that we have kind of planned out, so we'll see what they have to say. Already mentioned talking to Roy. I got a couple things for Roy, actually, when we get down to the right-of-way questions. An item that came up early on, talking with Ed, and, and some grant applications, is a concept of a traffic asset management plan. End dot's requiring that as part of our grant funding. I don't know when it needs to be done right now. I'm not getting a lot of clear-cut answers from End dot at this point. But one of the main items is what's called Pacer Asset Inventory. It's essentially, it's an assessment. These are all of their little guidance documents. Only three of them really matter to us. It's asphalt, chip and seal and gravel roads. It's an inventory, it's a number system, essentially, one to 10, or one to five, depending on the materials. It's my plan here shortly to, to do the inventory of our county myself, so I drive all the roads and come up with a numbering system using our GPS system, our GIS inventory equipment. Once we have that, though, there's a whole front-end and back-end document that's created from that bulk information. So I'm not sure, depending on when we have to have it done, depends on whether or not I'll have enough time to write it. So I want you to kind of think about that. I'm looking into when it needs to be done. I'm actually scheduled to go to a workshop that End dot's putting on, or the LTAP's putting on, June 22nd down in Richmond, Indiana. So I should have some more information then, but that's fairly late for a July 1st call for projects. So I don't know if this is something required before then or after then. So it's kind of late, but that's, they're doing these sessions all the way up until the end of June, so I'm gonna see if I can get information earlier than that. And that plan, isn't just the roads here, I believe it includes the bridges, small structures, culverts, signage. I mean, there's a number of different things that can be built into that, what that plan includes. So that's a, maybe a full-scale, top-down traffic planning document. So it could be fairly extensive, or it could be fairly minor. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of good answers for you yet, because I haven't heard back from End dot, so. That'll be something we'll be discussing for the next few months, I'm sure. Right-of-way documents, essentially, I just need to schedule some time with Roy to go through right-of-way documents that have been in the engineer's office for the last few years. There's quite a volume, I guess, to put it lightly. And then also, last item, this is a little premature, but talking about bridge structures and projects. I've been through part of the bridge inspection report, and I would like to at least entertain doing two bridge replacement projects. Take the top two from the inventory, which would be Bridge Number Two and Bridge 203. If you, if you're all right with that, I'd like to talk to some of the consulting engineers and get a price together, at least a preliminary budget of what this might cost, and where we would come up with the funds. It would be, those would be full structure replacements, foundation and deck versus a rehab, or just deck replacement. The reason I'm looking at those two structures is both bridges would be essentially similar in design. So the goal is to try to do essentially one set of details with two distant site plans. We'd bid them together, we'd be able to get, the contractors could bid both, or either-or. It'd be a little bit of an economy of scale for the engineer and for the contractors, so.
Where are those located?
I was gonna say, what's the price of the location?
That is one area of my geography.
It's on 700 North, between 600 East and 650 East, and 203 is down just a few thousand south, between 1 West and 2 West.
And that's the one that has the yellow stakes in it now?
Yes, yes.
Both of them. I, I've been to both, and they're definitely in need of replacement, so.
Make a motion to pursue that.
Second.
All right.
Aye.
I'll pursue those. I'll have some answers as far as cost, and where we could potentially kind of make the money, and see where they.
Where the money is at, so.
Right.
Perfect.
Exactly.
Thanks, Nate.
Well, thank you very much.
I didn't add, he didn't say anything, but we are doing some updates in his office, so.
Probably will need, I'm sure it's needed.
We're mixing bills and updates in his office, so.
Yes. It looks much better, but it needs a, a window.
A window, two doors, we put new lights in, he's got a whole new desk, computer system.
Good.
Those canopies out front, let's get those cleaned, highway and engineer, so we have.
Some people know where to go.
That wasn't in the budget, was it?
I have not got the prices for the camp.
No.
Just, just power wash them with a cleaning solution. All right, very good, thanks, Nate. Okay.
It's the last thing on the agenda, so, they're business, bud.
Hey, we want to update on the one I agree, just to let him, he'll actually know what's wrong.
Just very quickly, in last commissioner meeting, you guys approved us to move ahead with two change orders. One was for the stone and the approaches, the other was for the stringer damage. We're working with End dot. As of last Friday, it appeared that there was gonna be federal money available to cover those issues, and also the overhead damage. However, late Friday, they came back and said, there is not fiscal year 16 monies available, so we're still working through that. We haven't processed the change order for the overhead damage, because it's significant, it's $44,000, I believe was the estimate, and so. If there is federal money available, it's gonna be fiscal year 17 money, but we don't know yet if that's gonna be 80/20 funding. So probably at the next commissioner meeting, we'll have an answer to all of it, but we're not gonna process a change order on the overhead damage until we know that, because it's a, it's a big dollar amount, so.
Bigger than what we thought it was gonna be.
Right. But late last week, there was a suggestion that there might be monies available, and now there isn't, so. We'll know definitively in.
Give you 25 hours, anything can happen. It's amazing, so. So was that on the overhead portion of that, when they went through that?
Just in general, wasn't it?
The $44,000 estimate.
Yeah.
But you wanna, you wanna update in what you're asking for?
I'm just asking, since the subcontractor portion of that's like $39,900 out of Washington State to do essentially heat treat, reshaping of that. I'd like to see if we could just bring Ripper in and replace the broken and damaged pieces. So they're gonna look at repricing that. Then it'd be one subcontractor, hopefully we can get somebody even out of just Chicago to rip it down and place, it'd be aesthetically the same, but pardon to say, it's a historic structure, so there may be some, some avenues that might limit that. It is cosmetic, but it is mildly structural damage, and, and if we're not able to get the price down, it was, it wasn't an accident of some sort. Someone ran into it with equipment, there's rumors as to why or where. If we don't pay for it now on the project, if it's this $44,000 bill, how's the county gonna pay for that?
My, my question would be, when somebody hit that, did it stop them in their tracks?
The, wait, I've heard, now third-hand, I guess, yes, and that there were witnesses.
Suppose they lost their upper plate when they hit it?
No accident report.
Yeah.
Really?
No report.
I think it might be something to pursue.
Well, that's where, that's the question.
Because that's 44 grand out of our pocket, that.
That's a lot, significant amount of money.
I mean, that's a pretty good shot, somebody's hitting it.
Yeah.
I mean, step up.
Not only to our bridge, but to their equipment.
Yeah, step up to the plate and let your insurance pay for it or something.
Because this is something that the county is gonna have a fairly significant expense. Even if we get the price cut in half.
Right.
By changing this, it's still, let's say it's $22,000 that the county's gonna have to absorb. That's not something that was part of project, because the accident happened after it is on.
Okay.
So.
Just one other comment is, when the, when a project, a federal aid project like this lets, everything resets, and so if you get a million and a half dollars for a project, but it lets, and the total amount is 1.4 million dollars, that $100,000 that you think is yours is not. It's gone. It goes back to End dot and is used for other projects.
Right.
Ultimately, it can go back to Washington, it almost never does.
Yep.
But I may be coming to you and asking you to have End dot reconsider funding these things, because they're all eligible for reimbursement, and technically, there was federal money available to cover everything, and so. I may ask for your help to have them reconsider.
Yeah.
Funding these things.
80/20, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. 44,000, I thought it was anywhere, 8,000 or something. I was shocked. Wow.
Hold back to me. Okay, and I sent you out the information that we discovered that there was a couple more county-owned cemeteries, okay? And I have forwarded the information to the general insurance, so they do have that information, so that'll probably be added to our policy for those locations. When, one of my deputies actually did some research and found these, and then we also sent an email out to the trustees to look at the list that we had, and let us know if they had anything else that we wasn't showing. We didn't hear back from any of them, but the, the two cemeteries that we have down, both of them was in Jackson Township, and the trustee did contact us and wanted to know, what, what does he do now about the mowing of that one? Because, you know, he always took care, and I told him at this point to let him continue to mow it until, you know, anything ever changes.
Lancaster we own, too.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and I believe he's continually mowing those, right, and keeping them up at this point, but that's what I wanted to bring it up for, because I said, what do we do now?
What was the information? You got deeds? Is that what you found?
Yes, yeah, we have the deeds.
So if we have to start a, quote, cemetery commission?
Well, wait a minute.
Well, the statute says you can do that.
We can't.
Unless you, unless, that's really, you want to start managing some cemeteries.
One suggestion is simply find out about how much it would cost to manage them for the next 50 years, give that much money into each of the trustees, and deed them back to the trustees.
I don't know that deeding them is that. I think you could deed them to nonprofit corporations, but I don't know the statute lets you deed them to the trustees.
Township, however you want to phrase it.
Well, I don't know, that's what I wondered, too. That's what I wondered, because that's what my suggestion was.
Because how are the others done?
Because the others are deeded to the trustees. So can the commissioners deed it back to the trustees?
The others are deeded to the trustees.
Mm-hmm. Other cemeteries are deeded to trustees.
To township trustees?
To township trustees, yes.
But they're deeded by who?
By the property owner.
Yeah, well.
And we're now the property owner.
Property owner can do something different, but the county.
I don't know, that's why.
As I say, the county, it looked like the, the county could deed a cemetery to a nonprofit corporation, but I don't know, you can deed it to the trustee.
My other thought would have been is maybe take one, one each of the trustees and a commissioner or accountant person, as a three-member commission. Being in charge, one from Jackson, one from Lancaster, and whoever the other person is, just. Jackson, one from Lancaster, whoever the other person is, just to make that commission.
Can we find out if we can deed it that way, because that would just.
I like the first idea, first idea better, if that can be done.
So what was the first idea?
That we deed it back to them.
Deed it back to them.
And give them a certain amount of funding to take care of it.
I'll look at it, but if it's just a matter of how you, how you have it mowed or this and that, I don't, I don't think there's any problem with the, with the.
Because currently they're being taken care of, and we want to continue like.
The commission contracting for the trustee to do that.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, we also can do that, just contract the trustee to take care of that.
Right.
Now, the other one in Jackson Township is right in the middle of somebody's property, and there's no even stones that we can see by the aerial, you know, looking on GIS or anything like that, so that's why I didn't know what we could do about that one. I mean, they're not mowing it, because nobody even knew it was there.
Well, there has to be access, doesn't there?
There is no access to it.
There is.
Legally, there should be access.
There's no road access, yeah, there's no road access to it.
Would you send me those?
I sure will.
Please.
On that one.
Yeah, sorry Roy, I thought I'd sent it to you. I meant to, sorry.
I just remember seeing the email and said.
Yeah, sorry, I meant to send.
Get the information, get it to Dick Randall.
Yeah, and I did get it to Dick, but yeah, sorry, I meant to send that, but I'll get it to you so you can review those, but I do have copy, actually I have copies here, so I'll make them before I leave. The other thing is we did receive our one-time special distribution, I just wanted to let you know that, we did receive that last week, so that is currently in our holding fund. We did get information from the State Board of Accounts of how we was to quietus ad in, and we will be making those distributions out to the units as directed, probably after our commissioners meeting, I told my deputy that does this, quietuses, I said just wait till after, we get through our meetings this week, so I could just let you know that the money is here, and there is, you know, where we can only spend, our 75% of that money has to be used for roads and bridges, you know, as specified by the IC code, 25% can be used for quietus into the general fund and used for any county business. So that's why I wanted to wait till after the commis, or council's meeting to get everybody's input before we disperse that out, and I'm assuming that's how we will do that for the county's share of that. But just so you all know, you know, I am assuming that you would be the ones that would.
That's not.
Yeah, 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 you would be wanting to look at maybe a plan, because it does have to be appropriated, so, you know, we would have to appropriate, the council will have to appropriate the money to put into, of how you want to spend it, or what is to be spent on, which we know it's roads or bridges, so it could just be appropriated, you know, 75% of the balance to be used for roads and bridges, I mean, you know.
I think that's what needs to happen, because obviously we have roads and bridges to take care of.
Yeah, so, just so you're aware of that, and so we'll probably.
And cemeteries.
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to get it appropriated for this council meeting, of course, but, you know, we could get the paperwork in place and get it appropriated as early as next month.
Why don't we each just give our ideas to Nate and Ed, so then maybe we can throw them in the pot and see what we can accomplish with, what's our share out of that, 75% it's going to be 600, 700,000?
Yeah, as I say, we've got, how much was the county's portion of that? County's portion was 1,306,000, $141.18, so.
Say that again, 1.3?
1,306,000, $141.
Basically, I have 975,000, so that could get us.
203, huh?
10, get us 10, 10 roads chipped and sealed, or one bridge, maybe two bridges, depending on, you know, length and size.
So I'll probably have you stop in the office as president and sign a appropriation form, you know, that we could, you know, have it appropriated for next, for the, versus May, so it'd be the June meeting, so.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, kinds of things, sorry, that came in the last minute. Our security x-ray machine that we have has got some issues with it, I don't know if anybody's talked to anybody about it yet, but the quote just came in this morning, so Bobby just brought it to me, I said, well, let me just take it to the commissioners. But the quote to repair from Smith detection, and it's my understanding this is the only vendor that we have available to work on our, so that's why we always just use the Smith detection, but anyhow, the total amount of the quote was 1,287.91.
And how much is a new one?
Several thousands of dollars, they are expensive. They did send along also with this quote, a service agreement that you may be interested in, and the service agreement, there's two agreements, one, I think, the only difference was between the extended hours, and it's a thousand dollar difference, and the higher one is for extended hours, where the lower price one would be for hours eight to five, which would be sufficient, because we're not open at night at the courthouse anyhow, and response time within 36 hours versus 24 hours, but anyhow, the price for a service agreement, if you're interested, would be for a, 3,206 per year. So just so you can.
And how many years have we had this unit?
When did we put that in, do you remember roughly?
Ten, plus.
And we've repaired it how many times?
This is maybe the third?
Yeah, and it varies on repairs.
Yeah.
One time it might have been an x-ray unit, just various parts of the equipment, but like a new unit was big money.
Yeah, it is something to think about, I mean, if we would go with the service agreement, they would deduct 10% off of this one, and then all future, or all future would be covered, you know, 100% for that. It's getting older, one thing to look at, I guess it is getting older, there may be some more costs, just because of the age of the unit, so it kind of, you know, it's just something to think about.
Newer model might not have near the dollar amount. Right, and then might have someone looking to.
I mean, I think we're probably going to have to pay the whole expense this time, because I don't think you, you might want to think about the service agreement for a while, if you were interested or not interested, but this is what it would cost to repair.
We really have to know what a new unit would cost, so we could compare that versus the 3,000 a year is going to add up pretty quick.
And, yeah, and I could have, I could have them check on that, either the sheriff or Bobby, I mean, the sheriff is kind of in charge of the whole security part, so.
He might just put it in the file that we would have some inkling, want a new system.
Yeah, because I have no idea, I really, I'd show it's very.
Just have it in the file, you know, so if we can plan maybe two, three years from now, or five years from now, that it's going to need to be replaced.
Yeah, if there's a cost, you know, you're going to put it in a budget.
Right.
But I would need to have approval on this, and of course, this is, again, the security where we don't have a line item, we don't have an advised budget, so, you know, initially it's going to come out of the commissioner's budget, we may have to transfer or something eventually to cover it, but if you want to have it repaired, this is what it costs.
So you still want to look into it first, or approve it?
I'm going to take it under advisement, and do you want to make a motion?
It's not, I mean, it's not working right now, so.
Yeah, I think it's something we need to fix now, and then look.
Right, before we put any more money in again.
So my motion would be to approve the.
The 1287?
Yes.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
3-0, repair it.
And then look the.
And I'll have our sheriff or somebody check into what it is, and I can bring that with, next meeting or something.
Great.
And I believe that is all I have. No more papers here, so I think I'm done.
Okay. Roy, anything else? Audience open, any comments?
Kind of comment on the security system you have. You have Jake County, which doesn't have anything at all in their court house, and you have Blackford County, they have security, when they have a trial, and then they have someone walking the halls. I just wondered if our county could do something different than what we're doing and cut down the expense on this machinery. It's just a thought.
It's a good thought.
Why one county does, one county doesn't, another county does a different system, just do we really need to add?
Good question, John. Going back, way back, I think maybe even when I was on the council years ago, a question was raised about the security system, we elected not to go with it at that time. Then as things all changed, we all know how it gets into people's privacy to have to enter into a courthouse to a public place, some counties have had it and gotten rid of it. Some counties don't have it on the courthouse, but they have it in the judicial system building, strictly for the courts. We're not fortunate enough to have that. What was happening, and talking with the judges, had a lot to do with what is going on right now, is what precipitated the movement towards the security system. And as that goes, we got back on board, you know, with the events the way they were, not that everybody likes it, I understand how that works, but just so everybody knows that if there is a movement towards not doing it, that if the judicial system requests and can mandate it, that it would be in place. So that, that's what is out there, so that's why we moved forward with that. So that's, that's where we're at, not that it wouldn't be some movement, I mean, there's been talk about maybe why can't we put it on third floor? What happens then is when the auditor gets threatened, that's also come into play, at tax time, that's happened. We all know that the world's not what we used to live in, and I would agree with that. So at this point in time, I think we just try to, I think with all of us up here, we do what we can to accommodate, to make it easier, if there's a way to do it, we will look into it.
Well, that system that Blackford has, I thought that was a pretty good system, whenever they have a trial, they're there.
Yeah.
And then they have someone wandering the halls all day long.
Yeah.
So if you've got security there, someone like the auditors obviously gets threatened, you've got an auditor there.
Right.
But to screen everybody coming in when there's no trial.
Yeah.
It's kind of like.
I would like to just make a point, this is the people's house. We cannot use those beautiful doors on the second floor anymore, we've got to go in and out, we have to use, you know, corridor access, it's like something out of, out of, you know, a communist country or something. I understand the paranoia that takes over, but for, you say there's been incidents there years ago when this was started by Hanselman. You know, I went to the state police, county police, I went to the city police, there was not one recorded incident, except I think in the auditor or the tax person's office, where the comment was made, somebody ought to do something about you people, because there was a screw-up on some paperwork, and that was interpreted, I was told from that office, as an implied threat. And so now we're going to shut it down from all the people in this county, the taxpayers, and we can't, who can enjoy that? I was walking around at street fair time, looking at the, all the stuff on the wall in there, the history, I was asked what I was doing. It's not your house, it's the people's house, and, you know, we, I just, I just really feel strong about that.
And I appreciate that, I understand that, and I think it, as it moves forward, just have to take it as it comes.
And the courts, you know, they'll mandate it, we know that.
Right, right.
But it doesn't make it right.
Oh, I totally agree with you. Yeah, I sat through one commissioner meeting one time when we talked about some different things on time and hours, and the commissioner at the time says, well, we're not going to do that, and I walked out of the meeting, went up to the court system, talked to the judges, came back down, said, here's how this works. They abide by their own rules, they have their own hours, if the State Board of Accounts wants them, fine. It's, yeah, unfortunately, sometimes you got to work with it, but, yeah, good question.
It's a thought.
Yeah. Well, I'd like not to have it, but, thanks.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're done.